Michael Bouchard, absent. Molly McCann.
Here.
Neil McGyver, absent. And alternate member Zach Tyrell, not here. And Bradford Puffer.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you very much. And it looks like we will have room to seat an alternate tonight as a voting member. Brad, would you like to be seated tonight? All right, excellent. And Brad will be seated as a voting member. All right, we'll start off with a review of minutes from our March 20th, 2025 planning board meeting.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes as written. I'm not going tonight, I just did.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Abstentions, thank you ladies. All right. Moving on, are there any public comments before we get started tonight? If you are on the agenda, we will get to you when we get to that point.
I'm actually listed, am I listed?
You are, yep.
You are listed on the agenda. All right, perfect.
Did I actually make a request that we, because it seems like this master plan is probably going to take us some time to go through, could we have Richard go before that so that he doesn't have to sit around and wait for that?
I think that's a great request, yeah. Does anyone oppose that?
Nope.
Excellent.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for the suggestion. Do we have any communications received by the board?
No communications of, you know, particular planning board business, though there was a, an article about the Tenny Mountain development that's recently appeared. It's a, it's a communication of sorts anyway, in the New Hampshire Business Review, about the Tenny Mountain overall, you know, their vision and things like that. I haven't actually admittedly read the text of the article, but John has.
Oh, wow.
It's phenomenal.
Thank you, yeah, it's, I don't think anything too glamorous, but it is indeed a probably a communication of note to the board.
It's, it's like front page headline, like the Tenny Mountain, and it's like on page eight the actual story.
Oh, excellent.
What does it mean to be a front page headline? Is there like a print?
It's got a picture, and it says Tenny Mountain.
It's printed though, it's a?
It's printed and digital.
Yep.
Nice, do you have a copy of it?
I do not, but I will hope to obtain one because, anyway, yes, I don't have one currently.
It'd be great to see the copy when you get it.
Absolutely, we'll, we'll share that with the board once we do.
Was that their most recent publication?
Yes, it should be.
Here's a digital version of it.
There you go, well, that picture, wow.
There are more pictures as well. There are other pictures as well. I forgot what was on the cover of the magazine. There, there is the, the people.
There you go, okay, yeah.
The mountain.
Indeed.
Anyway, and like racing and stuff, and yeah, so it's.
Great.
Good, yeah.
Joseph is in there somewhere.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, and I guess I, I don't really have an update on it, but I can just let the board know that the discussions have resumed about the town's 10-year plan project application, which is the North Main Street project, that is realignment of Main Street north of Toby Road, basically in the area of Armory Road, where there's that sort of sloping curve, very poor sightlines. The speed limit increases right at the top of the hill, just before you sort of round the bend and also drop, you know, a significant amount. So it's, anyway, it's been identified as a longstanding safety concern. Also, lots of people use it for walking and biking back and forth from the Common Man Inn and Spa or the parking lot there. There's the Langdon Woods Recreation Area there, which you can access from behind the community garden. So really, a lot of use of this stretch of road, but it's, it's really, you know, it's a, the way it is currently is because of the topography, it wasn't really designed to handle the, the type of traffic that it sees today. So that application anyway would be a sort of holistic reimagining enhancement of that road, making it flatter, straighter, correcting intersection sightlines, and also adding, you know, continuing the sidewalk, which currently ends at Toby Road. So anyway, the town has asked for that to be added to the 10-year transportation plan through Lakes Region Planning Commission by having it designated as the Regional Priority Project. And I guess we're continuing to push for that. We, we would really like to see it funded, and, and I think it would be a huge benefit to the town. That was initially identified, the, the first time that I'm aware of that being identified in a planning or visioning document of the town is the 1995 Green Street Committee Report, which recommended that we undertake this project. So here we are, you know, 30 years later, we might have a chance at getting it in the 10-year plan. I really, you know, we're.
We were close last time, or a couple of years ago.
We were very close.
We were very close and kind of bumped, and.
Yep.
So applications back in.
Yep.
There was a accident between a car and a bike there a few days ago.
Oh, and we're, yeah.
If we can add that to our application, maybe that can.
Actually, that sometimes helps.
It's a good point.
Further along.
Unfortunate, but a, but a good point.
Very much, very unfortunate, yeah. Well, good, though, I'm glad that we're applying back on that application.
Yeah, I'll certainly let everyone know if I have any further sort of updates on it.
All right, does that wrap it up for communications you have?
That's all I have on my end, yep.
All right, perfect. Well, we will move on, and before we get to reports of committees, if Richard Gowan is here and would like to speak about Eight Reservoir Road, we'll bring that conceptual conversation up. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
So this is a lot, it's the second property on the right when you proceed onto Reservoir Road in the northwest, okay? This mobile home here, that's been there since 1995.
I'm on mine.
Three-year remodel plan on that. But anyway, I got looking at the lot, and I thought, you know, this room enough, my wife and I potentially, not saying that we will, but we were potentially thinking we would like to build there as well. So basically, the penciled line in the middle is a rough idea of what I would like to do. It gives enough road frontage by the regulations, is my understanding. The square footage is going to be, I did write it on, and it's about 2,000, a little over. The math didn't come out to equal 1/8 here, but that was probably my math, it was a hair off somewhere. That and scale, trying to do it, but anyway. So my question to you guys is, do you see any reason why this could not be done? And if so.
You have water and sewer?
Yes.
I think with water and sewer and the zoning in this district, Joseph, the, what he's proposing here conceptually does meet all of our zoning regulations to do that, correct?
Yeah, it appears to, at least based on sort of this conceptual information, it certainly appears to meet the, the zoning requirements for the single-family residential district, which I believe this is still included within.
I know it's not drawn in here, but I, I'm imagining that where you place the new lot line is allowing for a proper setback for the garage?
Yes, what is the setback now? It's 10. Yeah, so we'll have 10 foot on that side. I'll probably go a little bit deeper on the back side.
Yeah.
Just for their sake, whoever's renting there. At this, not that it really makes a difference from what we're talking about, but our plan is just to rent the mobile home once it gets rehabilitated, and I want to keep the garage because I have 30 years of construction materials, so.
Can I ask a very detailed question? This base map here?
Yep.
This street looks like it's trying to say Highland Street, but isn't it Reservoir?
It is Reservoir, yeah.
Okay, just check in on that.
That was, that was often, that map is from the original survey back 40 some odd years ago, and the surveyor that did that is going to be doing it again.
Have them check the road names.
Being helped, I should say, he was working for Mr. French at the time.
And we have 75 foot frontage, which is, meets the requirements for frontage for driveway and all that kind of stuff, right?
Yep, presuming that.
And frontage requirements, yeah.
Yep, assuming that, you know, those, those numbers are accurate, and it certainly appears to.
Now, the 10,000 square foot, just from my knowledge, I'm pretty comfortable that we're going to make that work here. Is the 10,000 square foot a 100% usable land, or is it?
Nope.
Joseph, can you clarify that?
It's just total land, so we don't subtract non-buildable areas for the purposes of standard lot size calculation, unless it were a, sometimes in a cluster subdivision that, that may come into play when you're looking at density bonuses and stuff, but just for a standard subdivision, we don't subtract non-buildable.
Is there a creek going through the back of the lot?
There's a creek, it does, it runs along the, this, yeah, exactly, runs along that side, and then, yeah, it's up, you drew that really well.
It's on the map here.
Oh, okay.
Cheating.
But yeah, this is all wetlands in the back corner here, this whole thing.
So are you concerned about where you're going to be able to place the house at all?
No, no, not at all, there's plenty of room there.
Great.
This section is like 100 feet deep, it's very good.
Cool.
It's up high, there's quite a bit of elevation compared to the back.
Between the wetlands.
Yeah, if I remember, just looking.
Drops down.
By the culvert, the culvert itself is about four and a half, five feet down. When you get to the back part of it, it's probably seven feet.
Yep, so it's quite a bit anyways, yeah. Do you know what side this water and sewer is on? Is it on your, the side of your proposed lot?
I honestly don't.
No, I'm just curious, it has no impact on this, just curious.
I'm going to be talking, of course, with the water sewer department, I will probably, if they'll allow me, take two services off from one.
Off of that one.
It would be the right thing, so I don't have to be any proud of it, they're going to ultimately tell me.
That'd be great, unless future frost eaves would be limited.
Well, that's it, I, if we don't have to put in the road, I prefer not to, yeah. There's no doubt, the sewer's in the road, so.
No, I was just saying, it looks good, and I wish you luck.
Perfect.
Thank you for coming.
I'll be getting after it, I'll be back in probably three months, two, three months.
All right, we look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good call, Sue.
Yeah, good thing we didn't leave that till the end.
I saw it on there, I thought, oh, this poor guy can't sit through this.
Chair, can I ask?
Good idea.
If we're in this kind of unfinished business, can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Unless we're going to come back to that after our discussion.
We'll touch on it before we, we'll go back there, but if you'd like to get a question, I'll believe you do.
It's just, it's kind of random. I was remembering that the Planning and Development Conference is happening, May 10th, and this is more a question for Joseph. It says it's going to be recorded, and it's all online.
Yep.
Do you know, and you might know this too, if it's going to be available post-conference? Because I'm not going to be able to attend.
It will, yes, the conference is recorded, and in fact, you could go back and watch previous year conferences too, if you wanted to not have to wait, but.
Exciting.
It's, yeah, probably a good thing to watch this year's, I mean, there's probably a lot of updated information.
When is it? May 10th? Yeah, it's pretty much all day, and it's online.
It is, and it's, you can register, the registration is available now, so if you went to that link that I had previously sent to the board, that I believe at that time said something like "save the date," it should now say "click here to register."
As of today.
As of today.
Yeah, literally just look today, yeah.
Yeah, and then it will be, they're always recorded and available to stream afterwards. So if anybody can't make it but still wants to see this year's conference, you certainly do have that option.
It's also worth mentioning that they plan webinar lunches.
Yes.
Lunches at noon has a, what is it, like, welcome to the board sort of thing?
Welcome to the board, yep, exactly.
I've watched the previous recorded versions of those, yeah. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Hello, Zach.
Hello.
How are you, sir?
Apologize for my tardiness.
Oh, no worries whatsoever. We'll wait to proceed and let you get seated, we're just switching gears here, so perfect timing. We, all right, so moving on to agenda number six, reports of committees, we'll discuss the formation of the 2025 Capital Improvements CIP Committee that, Sue, you have previously chaired, correct? Excellent, Joseph, do you have any comments on this committee?
Yeah, I can just speak to it very quickly. The committee was formed a few years ago, or reformed, I should say, by, you know, the, the planning board as a subcommittee of the planning board to look at the town's capital improvements program, which really is a sort of comprehensive look at all of the capital items that the town has, and looking at a program of repairing, replacing, you know, improvements, enhancements over the next six years is typically what the committee looks at. So it's not a, it's not a budget, it's, it's a planning document, it's a, it's a guide, but it does look at some of these questions about, you know, how much of the town's capital needs to be replaced in a given year, and what are the sources of funding that we should be looking at for that? That is, capital reserves, lease purchases for big equipment, not operational funding, not small equipment, but things like ranging from, you know, a, a radio antenna to a firetruck, you know, all of those big durable goods that are non-recurring, non-operational expenses. And the reason the planning board is, is involved in the process is, you know, ideally you want your capital program to reflect your master plan, at least to a certain extent, to the extent it can. So having the planning board member as the, the chair of the committee is reflective of the fact that it is a subcommittee of the planning board, and I did provide in the packet the sort of charge and purpose statement that the board adopted a few years ago for this committee, which is, you know, adopted by the board as sort of a structure for this committee, but it is, of course, the board's recommendation in the past, and again, this will be up to the board, how folks want to handle it, but in the past, often the board has picked a board member to serve as chair, who then comes back at a future meeting with a list of potential members, which would then be voted upon by the, the remainder of the board. That's, that's a way the board could handle it now, if there's someone who would like to serve as chair and, and start pulling that committee together, but ultimately, it's really up to the board how, how to proceed.
Okay, and that's what we've done in the past. What is everyone's thoughts on the past process of the CIP Committee, and is that how everyone wants to continue working it?
Still pretty new to me. I'm inclined to nominate Sue to do it again if she's willing.
I'd be inclined to second that, if you.
Because you have the experience, and because next year, since we're going to be moving to elections, things are going to change a lot. So, I don't know, I think you have all this experience, you might as well keep going, but that's my feeling.
I don't mind doing it another year. If anybody wants to do it, I certainly would welcome anyone to do it, but I certainly don't mind doing it, it's, it's interesting, and it's a.
I feel like it probably has a steep learning curve, and I feel like I'm already on a pretty steep learning curve, even though it's very interesting, so I'd be interested in learning.
It does, but I will say that the town administration really does handle it. They handle everything right up until the bitter end, and when we meet with the department heads, that's where we get a lot of information, from the department heads, they're really the ones that know.
They know what needs to happen.
It's really just kind of following the master plan and querying them about, maybe, think about this, maybe think about that, and, so they really do offer the bulk of the information.
They do, I think the best participation there is always when people show up and just ask questions.
Yes.
To your point, have you thought about, you know, purchase versus lease? Have you thought about used equipment? Have you thought, you know, can we defer this a few years, you know, those kinds of things? Because the goal really is, can we keep that capital investment tax portion pretty stable over that six-year period, you know? So sometimes you're, you're saying, well, we don't need to replace this year, this year, but we're going to do it early, or we're going to put money into capital reserves because this is a year we don't need to spend, you know, so you're, you're kind of juggling that six-year period.
Right, and the Budget Committee works closely with that as well, they're, they're usually, those members are on board with it. So it's really kind of a tight-knit little group, but I will say that the administration at the Town Hall really does do a lot of work.
So there's a lot of support.
A lot of support, it's really, it's good.
That's fantastic.
Yep.
And I believe Joseph at some point created the basic Excel framework for a lot of the work.
Which hopefully, you know, is continuing to work well. In the past, we've tried to keep updating, keep it, you know, keep the same basis, so we hopefully don't have things get lost in the shuffle, you know, but you always, you always find new things as you keep going, you just, it, it's really hard to think of every single piece of cap, you know, when you're, when you're the planning department, it's, it's not so hard, right? But when you're probably the highway department, fire department, you have a lot of capital. It, it's, it's actually not quite so easy all the time, and, you know, our departments, I think, do a great job of, of this, but there's a lot, there's a lot to keep track of and to think about how you're going to project, you know, the lifespan, potential replacement cost, there, there is a lot that goes into it from those departments in particular, that are really capital-intensive ones, like the lease, fire, highway, and probably the biggest.
Great, and you're willing to accept that nomination as chair, Sue?
Sure.
All right, all in favor of Sue being chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations, Sue, you have another year.
Thank you, Sue.
Chair of the CIP Committee, and "thank you" is correct. I think there'll be several months before you start actual work on that committee, usually, correct?
It's usually pretty quiet till about August.
Yeah.
And then things start ramping up a little bit.
Then it's intense for like six weeks, maybe, and then it's over.
Really not that, right?
That makes me feel better.
The bitter end, that's right.
Thank you again, Sue. All right, moving on to agenda item number seven, new business, discussions of the housing master plan chapter discussion and the master plan implementation review. Were people able to look at the implementation of the master plan for 2018?
Yes, pretty quickly, but yes.
Yeah, and I think that, there's a lot there to it. Does anyone have any thoughts of what was implemented well, meets better, actually, you know, before I go on to the implementation part, Joseph, do you have sort of an overview of this process and what we're doing on this?
Yeah, sure thing. So a lot of this is, is really driven by the HOP 2.0 project, which is our housing master plan effort with assistance from Barrett Planning Group, which has received funding from the InvestNH Planning and Zoning Grant Program. So basically, the, the overarching goal of this project is to, over the next year to year and a half, really develop a, a housing chapter for the Plymouth Master Plan that looks at all aspects of housing and how it relates to other master plan issues as well, and really perhaps helps get us thinking about where we are with our master plan, which was adopted in 2018, and generally, a 10-year cycle is, is seen as the, the standard best practice for updating a master plan. It's worth noting, a master plan takes years of work too, so it, it doesn't just happen, you know, if you start a 2018 master plan in 2016, then you're probably right about on schedule. So it, it does take some time, and starting a housing chapter is, is perhaps a good way to think about, really looking at the, the master plan as something that may be on the agenda to update over the coming years more holistically, but we have the funding right now to have Barrett Planning Group help us with this particular portion of it, and Judy Barrett did ask, you know, that the planning board take a look through the implementation section of our current master plan. Basically, you know, we're, we're a good chunk of the way through, you know, we're, we're quite a ways past 2018 here at this point, and, you know, there are a lot of goals in that document. There are something like 30 pages of implementation section with many, many goals on each page, and some have been implemented probably, some have remained unimplemented, some, I think, may still be town priorities that, that we really should be focusing on, and, you know, perhaps there are some that, you know, were, were important in 2018, but maybe the board doesn't feel are, are as important today, just given, you know, changes that have happened in the community. So really, the, the, the big picture of this discussion, and what Judy asked for some input from the board on, was how do we feel about what we have today for an implementation section of the master plan? Where are we today? What have we done? What have we not done? What can we continue to work on and really focus on? Because, you know, writing a housing master plan chapter in part should at least reflect what we have for our current master plan, you know, you don't want to just write it in isolation, so it's completely standalone, but you also may want to write it with an eye to the future as well. So you write it perhaps with an eye to the past, what we've done well out of the 2018 master plan, and also what we envision for the future. So all that's being said, it really is a good practice anyway, even if we weren't doing this housing master plan chapter, to think through, just in, in big picture terms, what have we done really well out of the 2018 master plan? Are there areas we should still be focusing? Are there things that, you know, have, have slipped through the cracks? Or are there areas that we really need to, to reexamine? And I guess that's kind of the, to set the scene of where I think Judy was hoping that the board would, would have some discussion and maybe get a sense of where the town, the planning board stands with respect to the 2018 master plan, to help inform her work to create this new housing master plan chapter, which in some ways, I think, we'll have to have an eye to the past, to the 2018 plan, and to the future, to whatever we come up with for our, our next master plan.
Thank you, that makes a lot of sense, and looking through the implementation of Chapter 3, I think there are a lot of things that we have done that were, you know, have been accomplished, certainly a lot that have not been focused on as much, but just a few that I picked up, you know, looking under ADUs and subdivision regulations, those are the things at least that I know when we, when I've been sitting here is that those have been worked on and improved, and the ADUs was also, you know, in cooperation with the state, also helping drive a lot of that as well, too. Does anyone else have any ideas of what they saw for implementation that they think worked well or didn't work well? Any thoughts?
Looking over the implementation section again, it, a lot of what we were doing in HOP Round 1 is a lot of what was focused on in the master plan, including the fairground overlay, which of course didn't get passed, but we, it's in the master plan, and we have language for it, and personally, I wouldn't mind still seeing if that's a go or not with the community and some more engagement. There was, Mahew Turnpike was mentioned for housing, and that's something that I think the Tenny Mountain PUD overlay really was trying to address, and downtown was mentioned as well for more intensive housing development, and that's something we haven't really gone for, and there's been some pushback about that. I just wanted to say about the downtown area, I mean, I'm really kind of curious, I mean, I have heard from people that they, and not, not students, because I know that sometimes the concern I hear, people who have said, I, I wish I could have an affordable apartment downtown, where I can like walk to my job where I work or other things, and I have, I have had this conversation with people, and I would like to see that revisited, and I wonder if, I'm thinking a little bit ahead of myself here. But we often talk about unit numbers, because that's how we do it with use, and I really wonder if something, not a full like complicated form-based code, but thinking more about the form of buildings and what looks good in the character of downtown would be a better way of looking at this question, and whatever you can fit into that reasonably would seem like it would be in the character of our downtown if we can, if we can decide what our downtown should look like, in terms of height, in terms of various, you know, things we could measure, which we do already anyway. I mean, personally, to me, that defines our downtown far more than unit numbers and stuff like that, just to think about, you know, the form of our downtown, and what defines the streetscape, and what our community can look like. And, like, I know this is a past example, that that's come up, and it's been through the, you know, zoning board, I believe, like, there's Alex Ray's property up to six units, and that he could fit many more units in without actually changing what the building looks like. And I'm like, and, and to me, that seemed kind of arbitrary, like that we would be like saying, well, the building doesn't even change, it doesn't really change the character of our downtown, like, does it matter if there are some more units in there and to provide more housing?
And I know that parking always becomes one of the pivotal questions.
And parking does become an issue, and it's a little bit ambiguous right now, some of how our parking regulations are written for downtown, we don't have parking regulations, and did we clean this up, Joseph, and do you remember, in the rewrites to some of this? Because parking was kind of ambiguous for residential, and it was clearly. Because parking was kind of ambiguous for residential, and it was clearly like, was, one part was changed and one part wasn't at some point?
Yes, so the, the situation with parking downtown as currently written in the zoning is that every, i- in general, parking is not required for uses in the village commercial zone. That's in our parking section. It, it says, other than in the village commercial zone, these parking requirements apply. And then it has the table of parking requirements. Where it gets a little bit strange downtown is that residential uses on the first floor of a building in downtown require a special exception. There is a set of special exception criteria which inclu- which, which is entitled, uh, special exception criteria for residential units in the village commercial zone, or something to that effect. And one of the requirements in that additional set of special exception criteria has to do with parking. So I think the argument would be if someone is proposing a residential, something that doesn't require a special exception in the downtown, the parking doesn't apply, but a certain type of residential use would require a special exception. And because of that additional special exception criteria, I think the zoning board would have to look at whether the parking applies. But the only residential uses that require special exceptions in the village commercial are those on the, the ground floor.
So it hasn't been clarified then, I guess?
So that, that has not, that has not, that has not changed since presumably at one point. I mean, I, I can't, I shouldn't really even speculate why that, that disconnect is there because I, I don't know. Uh, but it's, it's accurate to say that that is a little bit strange.
So I, I'm again a little bit ahead of myself here. I mean, I'm someone in general in the downtown area that's not really in favor of parking minimums, like most of our downtown is right now for most uses. I wouldn't mind seeing them implemented for residential. And then if a developer can do it and figure it out, then go ahead. And if not, then, you know. But anyways, I, I think I'm getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, but it is something identified that, it's like the one thing identified that we haven't really worked on.
Yeah, those other two areas we definitely have.
Yeah.
Which is a very challenging area.
Yeah.
In light oftentimes because of the parking that, all right, if we're going to double the amount of units in here, can we really put the burden on the town for that parking? So I think it's a very challenging.
And you can tell the developer, like, if you can figure this out, then go ahead.
I certainly am open to discussing and looking further to that, so, because it's, it's a challenging issue.
It will be, and you'll get the merchants involved in that too, because that's, if you get residence, residential places down there, their parking. So it's, it is, it's, that's a.
It can also affect their business.
Big discussion.
And people as well, like walking around.
Absolutely.
Parts, yeah.
I did find, um, I, I feel like there's a big deficiency with the college. Um, I know in one part of the master plan, they mentioned something about, um, a yearly meeting with the college and the planning board. And I don't ever recall that. Um, I think, I just feel like there's a deficiency with the college. I think we should probably try to engage more with them. Um, parking may, they may be able to help out with the parking here. Um, there may be, there's a lot of off-campus housing places that could be turned back into residential, could be so, I, you know, I don't, I don't know.
I, downtown, they have helped quite a bit in the past couple of years. We've got an agreement now with them when school's not in session for us to be able to use the silver lots.
Right.
So that's been.
That's right. That's, that's, that's right.
Huge in terms of summertime.
Graphic relief.
Yeah, and holiday time as well, right? Those are busy times in our downtown. And so that's been a big help. They have been helpful in that way. But I think your point about the changing demographics for the university and how that
Yeah.
very likely will impact housing in, in all of our kind of village commercial to some extent, but also sort of that residential.
Yeah.
And that multifamily strip.
Yeah.
So being in conversation with them more might be very helpful to us, actually.
So.
I think it would be helpful to us to know at least where they're going, what, what their plan of attack is with that, all of that. You know, I, I don't know. They may have.
Except that they know.
Well, and, you know, I, I don't know. I just, I just noted that that was in there and.
I noticed that as well.
I don't think they've done it.
I was working with my students, what, like a year ago now, I guess, on the, in the planning class, and we were talking about parking. And one of my students who did a project on parking in Plymouth, um, he found some towns that actually, um, pulled their parking together, um, including one in New Hampshire. And basically said, we're going to like, um, if you have parking already, you can just pull it with everybody else's parking and then come out with some kind of like smart management plan that says like, the university, for example, has faculty parking, which is mostly not used in the evenings. And we have people visiting Plymouth in the evenings who are looking for parking. And there are lots of examples like that of, if you walk around town at different times a day, you'll find certain lots empty and certain lots full. And if we actually pooled our parking together in some kind of like intelligent way, perhaps with the help of technology, and there are like apps that can do this for you, um, you can actually increase the parking tremendously, as long as you can then kind of wayfind it so you can actually find the parking. Um, but we can actually have a tremendous amount if we actually utilize these spots that are empty at various times a day.
I agree. And that's, they mentioned shuttle services in there and.
Yeah.
And I also feel like, um, biking, hiking, sidewalks, that type of thing. I know that we've talked a lot about it and we've tried to do some stuff with it, but I feel like that's an area that we, I, I would really like to see addressed, especially out on Tenny Mountain Highway.
Complete streets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something out there. I don't know how you put paths out there or what, but.
Yeah, there's, there is a to-do about assuring safety of multi, yeah.
And I think the sidewalks and, you know, the connectivity is a hard ask as a retrofit. And if we're not able to get it through projects like LRPC or some type of grant funding, I find it's an extreme challenge to retrofit a road for a sidewalk to get to point B, um, at the burden of Plymouth's taxpayers.
Well, and isn't.
It's challenging.
You're right.
Tenny Mountain, what can we do?
Not saying it's not, not needed at all, sorry.
What can we do if it's a state road?
I'm not sure what the answer to that is.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be on the state road. It could be, it could be, there could be paths through the backside on, in the, in the wooded area or the, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of things that can happen. It's just, I just don't feel like we've talked about that enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I always have a dream of having a mixed-use path that follows the river from the courthouse.
Oh, that, that part, yeah. I mean, the mixed-use path that follows the river, um.
From the courthouse all the, all the way.
Paralleling Tenny Mountain Highway has also been an ongoing discussion.
Yeah.
That has kind of fallen off the radar in the last few years.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have any select board kind of insight on that?
We got into a, a little bit of a disagreement with Riverside Landing and that development around pedestrian paths through there because of.
I thought they seemed like they were on board at some point. Did they change their mind?
Their particular agreements around the wetland permitting that they got was, it was pretty, it was pretty clear from their perspective that they didn't want pedestrian paths through there because of the way that it was funded.
Okay.
So we got, it, it got a little tense and heated there for a bit because.
I do remember with the.
Board, we were like, no, if we're going to approve this, we want pedestrian paths through there. And they're like, well.
I do remember this was something with the conservation easements, right? The conservation easements were saying, well, if it's conservation, you can't have a path.
Conservation, you can't have a path.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then there was a concern about the turtles.
Yep. So there's, yeah, exactly. The, um, where that stands as far as easements, the town does have, uh, the Conservation Commission has an easement for a path along the backside of the part of the property owned by Riverside Landing specifically. However, on both sides of that are, are conservation areas that were off-site mitigation for certain impacts that were, uh, that, that happened as a result of the development. So the turtles, the wetlands, um, you, you have to provide certain types of mitigation. So I, 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 yeah, that, it, it's tough. It's a tough issue, but yeah.
On that side of the road, I, I believe we are eternally locked down. I think, to your point, there are two spots that we can't pass a pedestrian path through.
Eternally.
I, yeah, it's a, it's like a forever.
Conservation.
Conservation easement, yeah.
That seems like a tremendous opportunity.
It did at the time, yeah.
So we just have to regroup and go to the other side of the road and figure this out.
South side it is.
But I do think, I would like to see that, I, I would like to see some discussion about that. I know we have bigger things, but.
And if the planning board can.
Like to kind of get it on there.
There's, there's, those trails are cleared, there's clearly going to be development on that side of the road. And if the planning board can kind of hold that.
It feels, it feels connected to that principle that we've brought up before about limiting the number of curve cuts off Tenny Mountain Highway as well. And Neil's brought up a road in the past.
Well, and in fact, trails, like multi-use trails are an incredible boon to economic development.
Oh, yeah.
It really is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And that, there's, I can't pick out exactly in the plan, even though I tried really hard to be really specific, but there was a lot of talk about non-car based and more than car-based connectivity between house and town in here. And it came up several, at several points. There was also, I want to congratulate the past board. I had a very specific call out of, uh, promoting more dense development to preserve open space. So very much achieved. Good work. Page fifty-four, numbers eleven and twelve.
Okay, partially achieved.
Partially achieved.
We, we've made some progress. I think there's.
Progress has been made.
Yeah. And it often is incremental.
Yes.
So, so can I call out something non-housing related?
Yeah.
Please, please.
There's talk of an economic development committee or commission, which I know has been on again, off again in this town. And and we have Mary Ann from the select board often on that role from the select board side. And, but as far as an active committee in town, I would like to see that be a standing committee that is always active like our other boards in town. An economic development committee.
Economic development, yeah.
Um, I, it, it, it always seems like it's kind of in hibernation or something. Not always, but oftentimes. And I mean, especially doing what this new work I'm doing right now, like I'm going to various towns and talking to them about economic development. And it's amazing to me how many towns that are smaller than ours with less commercial development than ours have standing economic development committees, um, that are always there, meeting once a month and, um, ready to organize and get things done, not just like occasionally when we want to do something. And I think that would really be a beneficial thing for this town.
So two months ago, the select board met with a consultant to help us, uh, try to get economic, an economic development initiative going here again. Um, and our plan is just to meet with two different consultants. So we met with that one and the other one had to reschedule out a couple of times. And so we're meeting with the next one at the next select board meeting. So, um, if that's an interesting topic area to you, we're, we are pushing on that to try to get it going again and hopefully make it something sustainable.
Yeah.
I think that's, I agree with that. And that's an exciting idea because I, I've never sat on these committees, but I have heard about them coming up, and it's more of a flash in the pan, um, the sustainability of the committee, whether it's, I know it's been town-specific and I think you partook in one that was town and college-related, that was.
Partook in, it was kind of.
You tried to get it off the ground, yeah.
Yes, yeah. But I do think to have a sustainable, you know, continually continual committee for economic development or something that looks at that is, um, extremely advantageous to, to the town. I think that's a great idea.
The other thing was a community development director.
No, yeah.
What's that?
I saw that in there. Well, as was Commissioner.
When June was here.
Yes.
She was Director of Planning and Development. And she was taken on to play that role. And then Joseph was taken on to be the Assistant Planner, more on the planning side, giving June more time to do development. And then she, of course, for her reasons, had to leave. Um, and so that's where we were a few years ago. June was the Director of Planning and Development.
That's right.
And if we did have like an economic development committee, like actually having a staff member, like, able to support that is really helpful. And I know that's a big ask. But it is beneficial.
Might be an advantageous route to look at.
Yeah.
Two other things that kind of stuck out to me, looking through this, was on page fifty, number ten, it says, consider provides, providing density bonuses when housing will be permanently affordable, which makes me think we should reopen the conversation about inclusionary housing and what that might look like. Um, and then secondly, having the conversation again about what we do to protect streams and wetlands. I know we have the environmentally sensitive area, but I know that that has maybe some challenges in it.
It's poorly written.
Okay.
And it's on our, like, it was on our agenda. And
Yeah.
I think we were waiting for the Conservation Commission, um, to do their, um.
NRI.
NRI.
Yeah.
Um, and then hopefully come up with a, I mean, depending on who, who on the board you asked various times, either get away with the ISZ or
Yeah.
um, create something more workable and helpful than the ISZ was.
Yeah.
I think it was a well-intentioned tool.
Yeah.
That had its flaws.
Seems like we could work on.
And when it started, we didn't have the Shoreline Protection Act.
That was before the Shoreline Protection Act.
Okay. Oh, I see.
Which I think now a lot of that overlaps and congruently mirrors each other.
That takes care of a lot of it.
Does it?
Yeah. But.
And there are towns that sometimes go extra.
Beyond the.
Beyond that, yeah.
Yep.
Do we know what the timeline for the NRI is, if that, do you have any knowledge of that?
Well, they got their funding, uh, or at least to start the effort at town meeting this year. I have not heard an update as far as actually, uh, the substantive work of it, other than just knowing that, you know, they have the money to, to start the project. And I believe they've already selected a consultant, so.
Yeah, I believe so. Okay.
Could be starting soon.
Well, maybe we'll have that information later this year.
Yeah, it, it, it'll, you know, it, it partly probably depends on what exactly they want to take on as part of their NRI. Because one idea that was floated by the Conservation, uh, Commission that I think they did, uh, mention to the planning board as well, was analyzing, uh, land use and, and regulations in their NRI as well. So that, that is certainly something that may be included and that may be of interest to the planning board. Once that happens, we just don't have, as far as I'm aware at least, we don't really have any, um, language or, or, I, I think it's early so far, but I'm sure we will see that in the near future.
So I wanted to mention something that I just think is a little bit misleading in the, um, master plan. And I don't think we have the capacity to actually do, but I still think it's worth mentioning. Um, the historic preservation of our buildings was mentioned in the master plan. And the fact that some of our buildings as part of a historic district are on the National Register of Historic Places was mentioned as a way of protecting and preserving them. And it is worth noting that the National Register is mostly nominal. It's, doesn't really have any binding power. It can be a step towards, um, binding power if you want to form a historical commission or something. But in and of itself, you could take a building on the historic, historic register and tear it down. And there's nothing really preventing you from doing so. And so I don't know that we really have the capacity to have a historic commission to actually preserve any of these buildings. But I think it is worth noting that the assumption, and I think it's a common one, that the National Register actually has any protecting power, is not true. It's mostly nominal to acknowledge that these exist as important, which you can then take, if you want to take the next step to actually preserve them.
I guess it is called the register.
Yeah.
Not the protection.
So if you don't know, we have the historic district that basically wraps from the old Webster Courthouse behind us through this building and down past the post office. And I think that's where it stops. Does it do the bank?
Our little post office square here, basically.
It includes the common, the bank, no, it does not include the current bank. It includes the Northway.
Northway does not include.
Correct.
It is, is the old Tamejowasit Bank that's included.
Right. And the, uh, basically the common and the buildings immediately, you know, on this side of, of the common are included in that. And the church is a certain non-contributing structure, but is within the district.
It would have been contributing if it didn't burn down.
Exactly.
Indeed. That happens, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah, also towns sometimes have a heritage commission, which is a, a step in between
Yeah.
uh, historical district commission and a histor- and a historical, uh, National Register district. There, there are ways you can regulate that. I, I don't know of any efforts that have ever been undertaken in Plymouth to advance any of those, that is, to actually have some sort of binding zoning authority over, uh, changes to historic buildings, but. to advance any of those. That is, to actually have some sort of binding zoning authority over changes to historic buildings, but
See, I just wonder if some people believe that the register itself is that power, which is not.
It's a protecting body.
Yeah.
It is implied, even on page fifty-one here, it says, "Work collaboratively with PSU to encourage the protection of landmark structures such as the Railroad Senior Center through nomination for inclusion in the National Register." So, we're protections in the
Why would, what would the college do with the involvement of the senior center?
I don't know.
Does it say PSU or PHS?
Says PSU.
PSU. I guess Rounds and stuff like that to some of the other buildings.
Yes, it's got Holmes House, Rounds Hall, and the Draper Manor Building.
Would we not have any oversight on what they own anyways, regardless of any committee or?
No, but I guess having conversation with them about getting them on the registry maybe, but
As far as
In terms of protection, yeah.
Rounds was built the same year as this building. Imagine like these two big brick edifices going up in the same year. Must have been pretty amazing.
No trees. Yeah, it would have been very different. For sure.
Okay. Are there any other thoughts, comments, or insights that anyone has about implementation?
There's one under the natural heritage policies, number four, prevent degradation of water resources by preventing potential adverse impacts, impacts to groundwater resources, on and on. But I, I feel like, I don't even know if there's anything we can do about this, but there are properties within the town that definitely are not great to some of our
Waterways.
groundwater and just the, and I just don't know how we would address that. How I, I, I feel like it's a real big concern. There's, there's some especially of note in, right now that have a lot of really bad stuff on them. And there's water near them. So, I don't know if that's something we can address, if that's in our authority. Can we require them to get a bond on the property so in the event something happens when the taxpayers are not responsible cleaning it up? I, I don't know if that falls in there, but I just feel like there's some discussion that needs to be had.
Are these sites compliant with all regulations and stuff? You know? Not that you're the expert.
I, I'm not, I, I am not going to answer that question.
I would say if you have particular areas you're concerned about, you should let the town manager know so that we can have the building inspector assess the situation.
Okay, 'cause, so I, I, but I don't know. I, I just feel like that needs some attention, though.
I think this was
In a lot of areas.
I was thinking about this in connection with why I brought up the environmentally sensitive zone. Because if this is a topic in the master plan and it's not really being fully executed to the best that it can be in the zoning regulations, then I think we should have a conversation about what that might look like in zoning form.
And I think that's exactly what I meant to say, so good job.
And I don't, I don't really know what it looks like in zoning form. I'd be curious to go down that road and see if we can figure it out.
And there are new recommended model ordinances related to PFAS that towns can choose to adopt into their zoning. So, that's something that while I, I, you know, you never know. I, I don't see Plymouth as being necessarily a hotspot of new PFAS emitters, but you, you do never know. I mean, you can adopt this zoning language and have that extra level of protection where if someone were to propose a use that would, you know, potentially contribute to PFAS contamination, you could certainly have the authority under this new language to adopt or, or ensure that there are safeguards in place or other measures taken to minimize any risk to the community. I mean, that's a very specific groundwater protection sort of thing that you could look at. But there may well be other areas too, but that, that one is in particular was adopted or was drafted, I should say, and some towns have started to adopt it last year. Plymouth could certainly look at it. And it's one of those, you know, it's a model ordinance. We'd want to tweak it and make sure it fits our, our local needs and demands. But if, certainly from a groundwater perspective, that's a, that's a really, that's a really new development to even have that model language. So, it's, that's also something the board could look at.
That'd be interesting.
Along similar lines, I also think about, you know, our two main waterways. And I really like the idea of embracing one of them more, which would be the Pemi.
Okay.
And really, I mean, embracing in the sense of like getting more people there.
Oh, I see.
And because it, it really is part of the historical, like turning of the backs on the waterways. And that really, we've, we've made some efforts, like the rotary with the amphitheater and all that to, to reverse that, but it hasn't really gotten very far. And on the flip side of that, I think we have a beautiful, natural waterway full of otters and wildlife and all kinds of stuff, which is the Swamchamaki Baker Waterway. Which, if we are going to think about like environmentally sensitive zones, I would love to keep one of these more protected.
One more for recreation, one more for conservation.
As a beautiful place to like be on the river. And the other more, a little bit more developed as it is already anyway. That would be kind of my own thoughts about some of the protection of water and waterways as well. Speaking of embracing the water, and this is potentially a master plan sort of thing. It's not exactly housing anymore, of course. We've, we've gotten beyond that a little bit anyway at this point.
Certainly.
But, but getting back to like the walkability and all that, and I know Joseph and I have had conversations about this, as I have with my students in that planning class like a year ago as well, that corridor between Main Street and the amphitheater. It's not a nice place to walk. It's not a nice place to drive.
No.
It's not a nice place to do this about anything. It doesn't look nice.
Does that have a name that
Kind of Railroad Square bleeding into something else.
So, it doesn't have an Island Street?
It is Highland Street still?
There are no buildings addressed on it.
Okay, yeah.
Generally often referred to on maps as high, as a, basically
A continuation of Highland Street. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know that we've had it surveyed. Maybe worth, you know, at, at some point, on a, on a bigger picture, master plan perspective for the town to, to consider maybe actually just having a survey of, of that little area, having some of the historical markers and, and records pulled and researched. So, we really do understand what exactly is
Property ownership there is argued about constantly.
Yes.
I'm sure it's confusing.
And from there all the way down behind, to the skate park.
Including a piece of road called Unnamed Way.
Oh, yeah.
Right. That's right.
We have
I would, I have recommended, and maybe we should push this, but I think we should name that section of road, even if it continues to not be
Sounds like it's named Unnamed Way.
Now it's called Unnamed Way.
But we have housing along
But he knows where it is.
This like stretch of whatever that is down there.
Are we talking behind, like Panther Pub and?
Effectively, if you go, yeah, behind Panther Pub. So, if you went down by Lucky Dog.
Yeah, and then you kept going
And then it turns
Skate park, right?
Comes out by the skate park. And it's a passable roadway. It's just
And we have housing on it.
Yeah, we do.
Even though it's not really a proper road.
Two different buildings, two different housing.
Oh, yeah, two, yeah.
And a skate park. I mean, from a nine-one-one perspective, you know, it would be a whole lot nicer to be able to say
Specific
A specific number on this specific
My ankle is broken at the skate park.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Which I'm sure is not an uncommon thing to
Yeah.
I mean, so it, it makes you wonder if we should do like, you know, like a plan New Hampshire Sherret or something to actually re-envision that corridor and maybe that going into that road as well for what that could be. And so, it's
There's a, there's an absent community member who has advocated for that for
Yes.
Many, many
This is Frank?
Many years.
Yes, Frank, yes.
And then I've suggested on a few occasions that if we were to name that section of road, we should call it Miller's Way.
Aww.
Just because he spent so much time thinking about it.
He certainly has.
He advocated for the road.
Good.
And, and very glad he has. But I mean, I really think it's also important to
Just think about the entire use.
Streetscape that entire area there. So, it's actually safe, it's welcoming. If people are coming If people are coming tubing down the river in the summer, they get off and they're not just like in the back end of something. They're actually inviting place.
Behind the courthouse, yeah.
And don't forget the sewer treatment plan is right there. So, that's not
And it's a little bit further down river, though.
It's right by that, where you're talking about Unnamed Way. It's right there.
Yeah, behind the skate park.
I'm also talking about the, the way that goes
Be kind of offensive some days. But, I mean, that's something to think about.
Sorry to interrupt you, but the, one of the first conversations I had with Phil Lamorow was at one of the first meetings for the housing before I was ever involved here. And I said something about like, does our sewer treatment have enough capacity? Because sometimes it's really bad. And Phil was like, yes, it does. It does. And I believe you completely. But sometimes the wind blows the wrong way.
Yeah.
That's all.
It's the manner with which they process it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. What were you going to say, John? I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna, I was just gonna emphasize that I'm not just talking about that Unnamed Way.
Correct.
But also that whole, like
All of it.
tilted field of asphalt going down from Main Street to the amphitheater.
Yes.
And that is the, actually the subject of, in two thousand six-ish, the town applied for grant money and was, didn't end up moving forward with the project, but we actually have designs for a streetscaped redefinition of that section of road and a sidewalk that connected up down that little slope starting at Main Street down to the amphitheater across the train tracks.
You mean their drawings?
Where like
I'm actually looking, I have on my
Town's current engineer, I believe it. Mike McNally drew those plans for us for a grant application almost twenty years ago. And it's a, I see it in the, in the files. It's a, it's a beautiful concept. It's definitely some, so there's precedent for that, is, is what I'm saying. That, this is, this is definitely an idea that has, has precedent. There, it's, it's been looked at and I think is, is a great one to think about. And then, you know, as well, we had a CDBG-funded feasibility study for that sort of Unnamed Way portion. I can't remember the year. That was a little earlier. It was also maybe twenty years ago that looked at upgrading that, that section of road. And that was just a feasibility study. We didn't actually build or acquire anything, land acquisition. Yeah, that's the, that's the
Is it right there?
Let me up my, my brightness.
Twenty, January of twenty twenty, I saw
That's the engineer's drawing? Okay.
The intersection, near Rite Aid.
Yes.
Reimagining of that intersection and at the time connecting it down into Unnamed Way, which wouldn't work these days because we have a pond there.
Yes, yes.
And I, I don't, are those plans still in existence?
Probably part of the same study, if I were to guess, I would say, because that, it was really looking at that road all the way to the end, if I remember right. So, everything that we call Railroad Square today and sort of beyond. So, I, I think it was a pretty comprehensive study. So, I, I would imagine so. And I think that intersection is
I was gonna say, everything we consider or we call Railroad Square today, I, I bet you if you ask five people what Railroad Square is, it'd give you five different answers.
Probably, yeah.
It's a, it's a messy section of town that looks entirely unplanned.
Messy section of town.
Well put.
That's true, yeah.
And there was even a concept at that time, much less developed than the sidewalk, but for a, call it a multi-use walking path that roughly paralleled the, the Pemi River as well. There was never much definition given to it, but I think it was some folks involved with the rotary who, around the same time we were looking at the sidewalk to connect to the amphitheater, were also looking at a miles-long riverside path that perhaps at times went alongside the train tracks, other times more alongside the river. But that, that's definitely been tossed around as, as a concept as well. And that's, this is sort of the
The snowmobilers are already doing it, like on the tracks at times.
Absolutely.
So, it's like, not even an unknown use.
I think I had just one more thing.
Please.
I think.
Please, if it's two, we won't hold to it.
I, I wrote a question down. I was seeing page forty-four. This question about, it's not forty-four. It's on page, can I read my own notes? A question about redevelopment of sites being currently unused. I was thinking
That was my next, I was actually
I was thinking about, yeah, Tiny Mountain Highway has, we have clearly places that are not really being used that were developed that are not seemingly, I don't, I don't know what plans there are for them.
Talking about town-owned land or not town?
Not town-owned land.
Oh, okay.
Like where the US Cellular is.
Yes, correct. Yeah. And I, I don't know if there's anything we can do in the ordinance. I mean, I'm sure there is. I don't have the language for it to encourage redevelopment of already developed land that's not currently being used to funnel that kind of more intensive development onto Tiny Mountain Highway in the way that we've previously discussed.
That'd be a great topic for a economic development committee.
Okay.
We'll turn that over to the economic development committee.
Page forty-five, number eleven, is what you're referring to, I think.
I had that circled as well.
Yes, thank you. Exactly. Yeah.
I mean, to some extent, it, it's a matter of just attracting enough people into Plymouth to do business
Yeah.
that there is the desire to redevelop all those properties.
Right. The willingness to invest in the cost of redevelopment.
And to some extent, that is where the economic development committee comes in to actually work on that networking and
I see.
selling of, you know, your town is the place to be and
Interesting.
even some of the kind of chamber-like functions.
Good news, we do have an active chamber now.
Yeah.
That brings in that number six, though, to manage the pace and scale of development to ensure the town, Plymouth Village and New Hampshire DOT can provide adequate facilities and services. So, that drags them into that as well, because the more we put out there, the more they're gonna need. But how do, how do you engage that with them? So, that's another issue out there.
I've been fighting with them about that intersection.
For years.
Another option for the redevelopment would be, which we discussed in housing, would be, I don't know if it was exactly seventy-nine E, which granted tax exemptions to the redevelopment of properties. It was pretty, there's
Temporary ones.
Temporary, yes. Temporary ones. Pretty much two different tax exemptions. Two different ones you could do.
For the town, you mean?
Yep, so within the town, taxes, property tax exemptions for pretty much Village Core.
Okay.
It was defined as town, so the town, core, or outside of that.
I see.
And when we say exemptions, it, it freezes you at the current rate to encourage you to do development without having to pay more taxes for a certain amount of time
I see.
as an incentive to redevelop those properties.
Right.
So, it doesn't mean you don't pay taxes. It just freezes you at the current rate.
And after the tax, and after that, sun sets. Then you're back, you are up to the, you know
New market.
You pay the, you pay the amount.
Yeah, yeah.
And
That still exists. We still have this.
No, well, we, we have, you have to adopt it into your town.
So, we didn't adopt them, we were talking about during the housing thing. If memory serves me correct, it seemed like there might not have been the appetite for it. I do think, though, that it's something to revisit. I think some of the concerns were why are we giving, you know, when we're so, when we feel so stricken as is, why are we giving any breaks whatsoever? And I just think that there might have been a better long-term vision
I see.
of, well, we're not taking, we're not necessarily taking away from the tax base. We're just not increasing it for this. And we will get it, but what we're hoping to get in that interim is that development.
Yeah.
That, that
Yes, yeah.
And like, the, the thing is there, like, if you don't do anything, you're not going to raise your tax base anyway.
It's not gonna
That's right, yeah.
And, and, and this is just a long-term plan to say, eventually we will get more. And I think, and, and the one area we were looking at mostly with this is actually the area around Russell Street that is mostly student housing at this point. And as more and more students are on campus, some of that could be redeveloped.
Yeah, for sure.
That redevelopment, is that only for existing structures?
Yep, so it's for existing structures. And I'd looked into the program specifically at one time. And don't quote me on this, but it was something along the lines of, if you're investing at least half of your money, half of the purchase price, you're investing, reinvesting into the property, you'll, you'll get that tax exemption. So, if you buy a place for five hundred thousand and you immediately put two hundred fifty thousand additional funds into it for improvement, then you qualify for said.
That's basically asking the developer to take what would be tax money, put it, invest it into the building.
You had to put it, and then, and it might not be this specific, but you had to put a substantial amount into it to get that tax incentive. And I think it's something worth revisiting, because
I agree.
when you bring up number eleven, you know, redevelopment, it's, I think it's an incentive financially. You know, one of the only ones we're able to offer, which isn't gonna, I don't see how it's detrimental long-term.
Yeah.
Because, like you said, we're not getting
It's not deferred forever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the time period on the deferral?
It's up to, so each of these applications is actually decided by the town's select board. And the select board can establish criteria that determines how long it would be for a given property. So, you could score basically an application if it meets, you know, if it preserves a historic building that the town wants to see preserved. You could give them ten years. Is, only does, you know, a certain amount of improvement. You could give five years. I think the absolute maximum is either five or seven that the board could give, but I the absolute maximum is either five or seven that the board could give, but I, I could be wrong.
Yeah.
There've been a nut, there are a number of versions of this program, so seventy-nine E includes like four or five, there originally were just two, but in the last couple of years, the legislature's created several new sort of subcategories.
It's the housing opportunity zones now.
Housing opportunity zones, residential property revitalization zones, there's the traditional sort of downtown core-focused revitalization, and then there's also newly an office-to-residential conversion zone, so there, there's actually a lot of different, different nuances in the program, but ultimately, um, the select board, or the, the board that issues the, that approves the applications really has, as I understand the program, some flexibility in deciding how much they wanna grant.
So that would be something the town would have to adopt-
Mm-hmm.
At a town meeting, and then the decision would go to select board for the applications.
And Barrett Planning Group wrote a beautiful new, um, guidebook to the program.
Yep.
This is a state progress-
That's right, because the program about twenty-four months ago was very convoluted, if I remember, well, there was, there was not a lot of clarity.
The state asked them to write a new one, or-
Yeah, it was confusing.
It is available now, and I can send it out to everybody on the board as a, as a addendum at some point as well, if you'd like, it, it really does provide some good guidance on the program, I think, um, some of the newer parts of the program have not really been used very extensively, the office-to-residential and the housing opportunity, but the, um, that specifically like the downtown core one has been pretty widely adopted and, and seen some success.
That'd be interesting, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to share that guide.
That's the one we could use like in the Russell Street area, potentially.
Yep, there's, there's definitely some options there, there's also the economic revitalization zone, which is a separate state program that is more targeted at underutilized commercial or industrial property, where businesses that, and, and I'm, I'm speaking off the cuff a little bit here, I haven't read about the program in a little while, but businesses that invest a certain amount in a sort of underutilized commercial area of the town can qualify for certain state tax incentives, so it's a slightly different version of this, of this idea, where, um, the town could, at its local option, designate an area where certain types of business investments, assuming that the state signs off on your designation, um, you could have businesses investing in those areas benefiting from certain, uh, state-level tax benefits.
So we would have to adopt that as well, as a town?
Either one would have to be adopted.
Where do these sit in our town, like, legal documents, once they're adopted?
They would, so it's a good question, it would be kind of a, it wouldn't be through zoning, it would be an, like a standalone ordinance essentially, that the town would adopt, it would have to be, uh, by my recollection, the, the legislative body, so the town meeting would have to adopt these, um, basically as, as an ordinance, and, you know, in, in Plymouth, we do have, um, sort of our, our codified ordinances, we don't necessarily have them all together all the time, but theoretically, you can think of all of the ordinances that town has adopted, not the regulations, like site plan subdivision, those are separate, but all the ordinances that have been adopted by town meeting, you could think of them as one thick book of ordinances that have been adopted by our legislative body, and, um, that's really where they would fall, as far as I understand, um, but these are also something that, um, you know, would be, need to be adopted in pretty careful accordance with the RSA, I mean, we have to follow, you know, we have to designate them appropriately, um, you know, we have to make sure that we're designating an area that meets the criteria, basically, and that our criteria for reviewing them are what, what those criteria are supposed to be under the, the, basically, terms of the program defined by the, the RSA.
So would they have to be on ballot, or would they be at actual town, like, the caucus?
I do not know the answer to that, I would have to, I would have to research, I'm sure it's in the guidebook that Barrett Planning wrote, but I, I don't know that one.
Okay.
So you, so I did have actually a different que- comment, I, I thought we had the same comment perhaps, I was actually thinking about town-owned land.
Oh, okay.
Um, most notably probably the old hotel, the old inn.
Oh, yeah, mhm.
Um, but also, I believe there's some on North Main, right, as well? Um, like, going, we, we, north of North Main on Route Three or something, um, there's a bunch of pieces of town-owned land, but especially the one downtown. Um, and I, do you know, have you heard anything back from LRPC about the whole brownfields program? I know we were looking into that.
Yeah, so essentially, LRPC has actually started that, and they have, they basically done the background work to start that assessment.
Okay.
Um, it, it's a two-phase assessment, so phase one is, um, background, conditions, not actually the substantive work of going out to the site, um, but really thinking about what's the possibility of contamination, they've spent a lot of time here looking at historical records, um, but it, it basically, I, I have not heard anything as far as the idea that we, we had proposed to them of trying to incorporate some, some visioning, some sort of community, uh, visioning exercise for that property, that being said, even if we don't hear that, having this brownfields assessment is, is a great opportunity for us to do that anyway.
Work and just do that, too.
Planning Board has, certainly has the ability to, um, call some community visioning session, and we can certainly, even if the, the terms of the, our hope was that the terms of the program through LRPC would allow for some visioning to happen with assistance from the folks doing the brownfields assessment, and I, I still hope that is the case, if it's not, the board could still take it up on itself to have some type of vision, because that is certainly a highly, um, visible piece of town-owned land.
Where is it, where is it?
Some-
Right across from the Flying Monkey, where the big DEA sign is right now? The old Plymouth Inn site?
Oh, okay, yep, 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 yep.
Right next to the American chestnut trees.
Okay, yeah.
So you're saying that you would like to take advantage of the LRPC's ongoing brownfields?
Well, they're, they're already working with us, as Joseph was saying-
Yeah.
On that site, and who knows what'll happen with that program, um, but that's often the first step towards kind of revitalizing a disused site.
So having like a design-
Like a design she-writer or something.
-with the town, to see what should we do with this site, basically, okay.
It's just sitting there empty, right?
Yeah, it's holding a sign, actually.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough, it's holding a sign, and, and lots of foot traffic, walking across it.
Desire lines.
On the old Webster Street, right?
Yeah.
Um, which the town also still owns that right-of-way.
Yeah.
At one time, there was a stairway, at the time of the Plymouth Inn, and some may remember that.
I do, yeah.
When the Plymouth Inn was standing, there was a, a concrete stairway that was perhaps a little bit lacking in terms of safety, so now there's, there's nothing, but it was a formal walkway, and it's quite clear that it is, it is still used as a walk.
I think all this is relevant, in, in part because our current master plan does call out having a downtown master plan, which we've talked about before.
Yes, yes.
Because there is so little said about downtown, it's the most important part of our town in this document.
Hmm.
Um, and like, think, starting to think about, it'd be nice to start to think about what downtown could look like.
Yeah.
Are you proposing two different chapters for master plans?
Um, we ha- we had talked about this before, so, um-
Might be.
Yeah.
There was, I feel like there was another master plan mentioned, maybe it was the, I think I just learned that there's an airport master plan, and I looked at it.
There's an airport master plan, and at times, the board has tossed around the idea of a Tenny Mountain Highway master plan.
Right, that's it, that's, yeah.
I, I, we, this reference is the access management study for Tenny Mountain Highway, which is kind of a, is a kind of a planning document, but isn't necessarily a more big-picture master plan, it's, it's more, uh, access-specific, but that, that's certainly been discussed by the board in the past.
The airport was the highlight of our town meeting this year.
Oh, man, shucks, shucks I wasn't there.
So it's quite the discussion.
Really?
Um-
It was the most hotly debated sanitation.
Sanitation was of concern.
The bathroom.
Neil had some colorful-
Wow.
And a new well to feed the bathroom.
Um-
Wow.
Not to get sidetracked.
I was gonna, I was-
I'm interested, yeah.
Speaking of Tenny Mountain Highway, though, it is worth noting that, um, we have housing up to Hill, um, like the veteran housing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have Habitat looking into creating a housing development.
Hmm.
Um, and in other words, there's, there's more and more reason, to go back to the whole, like, multimodal transit sort of question. Um, with the actual residential there, not just like talking about it, but like, it already exists, and there's more being talked about and proposed, and in the past, there was also more being talked about on, who was it, Chris Carter? Who had the, the site down the other end of Tenny Mountain Highway?
Yes, across from Yonah Road.
Um, over there, and, so people talk about it, and some of it's actually going in already.
Yep.
And if we do have any significant amount of housing there, um, in addition to all the businesses and every other reason, like, actually having some kind of other form of transportation besides automobiles-
Yeah.
Um, becomes really important.
And that's when my concern sort of comes out, that, so, uh, we'll use the housing up on Boulder Point, just as an example, so we approve housing to go up there,
Mm-hmm.
Housing goes up there, and then people are screaming, whoa, there's no public, there's no safe way for, uh, people that are up there to walk.
Walk, yeah.
And I understand that, and I do sympathize with that, I also converse, say, well, housing was approved to go up there because it was zoned to go up there, but now is it truly the burden of the town to put in those sidewalks to satisfy that concern? I don't know, I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
This is where the master plan comes in, though, right?
Yeah.
This is where we actually have to have a conversation-
Yeah.
About what we envision-
Right.
Yeah.
Um, for these neighborhoods.
Right, because every time a development goes in-
Yeah.
I don't, well, I don't want to, but like, now the thought pops into the head, all right, well, what happens in fifteen, ten, whatever X amount of time down the road, when people from this development or that development are walking down the side of the road?
Right.
It's now a safety concern.
Yeah.
It's like, well now, we have to go spend tax dollars to build sidewalks, I don't know, it's just thought moving forward, it's a balance there.
I, I, just thinking about like, strip development, which it basically is, right? Um, there are places you can go where that have strip development and no sidewalks and no trees, and it's frankly kind of a hellscape.
I was gonna say, it works, it doesn't sound like that would be-
It's so good.
And, and then you have like strip development, which does have some like decent landscaping and some sidewalks, and I think of like North Conway, which I'm, which is not a place I would choose to spend time necessarily, but it's a much more hospitable place than some of those other places, where you don't have that, and it's an attractive place for business in part because even if people don't use the sidewalks very often, it has the appearance of being hospitable to people. And that sense of like, being a nice place, this placemaking, really carries a big weight for businesses moving in. Um, and I think that is worth considering, when you think about, like, a sidewalk is expensive to put in, it's probably even more expensive to maintain, and plow and all that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, where does the cost fall out on that, between that and the fact that by having that there, even if it is underutilized in the beginning, or maybe even the long run, who knows? Um, it'll be a more inviting place, that might invite more economic development.
Yeah, it's more visually appealing.
Yeah.
There is, there's something in here, too, and I can't find where it is, but it mentions working with a developer-
I was just about to say-
To improve, to help improve whatever needs to be done, so the developer, you can, when they come in, that's something you could go over with them.
They have to, may, just come up with some kind of plan that down the road, that you would have sidewalks, and that, that they have to, instead of getting, dropping all the town, that they're doing this land, and they're putting this in, what do we think, they, they should be expected to pay for some of this, or maybe something like that, I would think that would make-
I do think they should, in some ways, putting them in is the cheaper part probably than maintaining them.
Yeah, I can see that.
Um, but nevertheless, it, it is nice to have at least some part of it covered.
Yeah.
Require developers to pay fair share of costs to upgrade or add sidewalks to frontage of property when creating or expanding a new property.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that is in there.
And it's a good idea.
Yeah, it's an interesting one to consider from a land use regulation perspective, which is something the board could consider, that, some municipalities do place a requirement on, say, if you're substantially rehabilitating a property or doing a greenfield development that requires site plan review, or a subdivision along certain roads, some towns do require the developer to build sidewalk, not just within their property, but along the road frontage. The problem with that is, in the interim, and it could be many, many decades, you have developers who are building a section of sidewalk that doesn't connect to anything, and it's very easy for the town to say, well, there's no sidewalk anywhere near this, we won't require you to actually follow through with this requirement, so I would say, Laconia even has had this requirement for a long time, and is continues to face pushback and, and may even abandon the policy of requiring these, because it's, those policies can work well, but they only work well if it's consistent for a very long period of, that is specifically a policy that is not an impact fee policy, but actually build the improvements along your, you know, the frontage of your property, so that, that, that is done, there are, there are regulatory ways you could do that, you just have to be, be thoughtful about how it aligns with an overall vision.
Do any communities like do that i- in a way that, you put a trigger in place, like, once we hit fifty percent of coverage, then the town comes in, puts the rest of it in?
There's no, I'm not aware of anywhere that would have that in their zoning, and I don't think you could put that in zoning.
Well, I guess you can't put it in your zoning, no, probably not.
You could have the town committed to do that, if the town's people, the voters, put money and capital for that, collected impact fees, something like that, you, you could, but it, it's a, it's a good question, and I think that speaks in some ways to the, the value of thinking about what the vision is for a, a specific area.
And you don't want anybody waiting, so for somebody else to be the fifty percent, and then like, everybody, when you get to forty-nine percent, there's no more development.
Right, here it stands still.
But Laconia is a, is a really good example to, if you drive along, um, well, any number of roads in Laconia, you can look, I, I encourage you to do this, actually, look at the sections where there are sidewalks that are discontinuous and where there isn't, yeah, and you can tell, this was a building that required site plan review, there's a sidewalk along the road frontage here, the next one up is a single-family home, which didn't require site plan review, there's no sidewalk. The next building up was built before the town had this requirement, clearly, it's a, you know, nineteen thirty structure, no sidewalk. Then you have sidewalks, so it really takes long-term, uh, I would say, consistency from the town to, to build a network.
Hear me out here. Um, Neil mentioned at some point, if we could get a sidewalk, the couple hundred extra feet to the corner of Tenny Mountain Highway, that would trigger the highway department to put in a crosswalk.
Hmm.
I believe he mentioned this.
Like from Highland Street?
Um, yeah.
That's correct, yeah.
And if we are in the ten-year plan for the intersection down the, down the street, like a quarter of a mile, and we put sidewalks into that-
Hmm.
Um, if, and if DOT agrees to that, um, we're all of a sudden starting to fill in pieces. That could very quickly become more.
Well, I think especially if, again, that piece of land I was talking about earlier on, on this side of the, of Tenny Mountain Highway got developed, you could encourage that to put in sidewalks, which again would be to nowhere.
Yeah.
Because there's just that-
For now, yeah.
But if you st- if we started that process of like, let's get it out to the, to Tenny Mountain Highway, it would make that make more sense.
You're talking about the south side of Tenny Mountain Highway?
Yeah.
So can I, can I maybe redirect, Joseph or Matt?
Please.
Um, do we need, because we're having this kind of nice broad, fun conversation here, do, do we need anything for Judy to get working?
That's what I-
Well, we just did what she asked us to do, we talked about, let's hope she was listening.
Do we have any, does anyone else have any other points they'd like to discuss, before we move on?
Ah, let's see.
Not from this conversation in total totality, but-
Yeah, one thing just to keep, that I think is an interesting, uh, thing to keep in mind as we go into this master plan project, is that one change that is very, very, um, apparent since this master plan, this last master plan was written, is population trends, this master plan was adopted as Plymouth's population was continuing to increase, and then reached its peak, right? Twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and has been in a steady decline, at least our official census population tally's been in a steady decline since about twenty eighteen, and much of that is fueled by, well, there's, there's so many factors, I couldn't even contribute, but the university is, is, is probably the number one factor, the decline in enrollment has brought a lot less people, but Plymouth's population trend is, is very different going into this master plan, where we've been about a decade of downhill trend as opposed to this master plan, which was written at the end of a uphill.
Are we declining still if we take the students out of the equation?
Yeah.
I'd like to see that.
If you take out group quarters population, I don't know, our households have been relatively consistent since that time, so you could probably make a, make a case that it's more similar, that is, it's less of a decline, if you were to take out the students, I think that's-
Maybe still a bit of one?
It's, it's tough to say, because households are not a perfect
Yeah.
measure of that, but households are, are relatively steady, but that's an interesting, from a housing perspective, when we're thinking about- But that's an interesting, from a housing perspective, when we're thinking about the demographics in town, what types of housing units are being demanded. How many people live here? It's, it's certainly just a background noise that I think should be at least kept in mind when we think about the, the next step.
Elementary school student numbers are down too, which would be an indicator that the non-student population was.
Or have lower birth rates.
Either, yeah.
I think that's.
Maybe both.
Yeah, I think both.
Well, there's that piece two to um share residential development proposals with SAU and school boards for collaborative impact analysis. Which, do we do that now? I mean, I don't recall meeting with any of the school boards or schools.
We haven't had, in the time that I've worked in the planning department, we've never had a residential development proposal over eleven units. So the large scale impactful developments, frankly, I mean, if we saw, in my view, if we saw something like the summit at Mount Fratton Act development, we absolutely should share that for feedback from, from everybody. We, to my knowledge, we have not done that with any developments during the time that I have spent, you know, here in this, in this office. But we also haven't seen, you know, a really um fifty unit housing proposal.
And, and in some ways with a declining population, um, a boost of students that actually got to school, the capacity could actually be an economic help.
Well, sure.
As opposed to the way it was twenty, thirty years ago. And. Okay, I'm, I'm thinking on, on a darker avenue here in terms of master planning. So if our current budget passes, um, the USNH system is going to be slashed tremendously.
Thirty percent, correct?
To what extent do we need, and I, I hope that's not a long-term trend, but I can be hopeful. To what extent does the new master plan have to consider um, the sustainability of Plymouth with a dwindling either, either like payment in lieu of taxes or footprint of the university or whatever it may be. Going forward, if declining enrollments continue, if declining funding continues to actually maintain buildings and stuff like that. And I'd like to be optimistic and say we're gonna better fund our schools and our education in the state. Because it's for the benefit of the state to have young people who want to stay in the state. Um, because we can't afford to take care of our aging population. It takes workers and a workforce to take care of an aging population. And if we just have aging people and not young people, we can't even take care of the aging people anymore. We're already kind of there. And so in the bigger picture, I hope the state gets its crap together. But.
That's a risky bet.
Yeah. Without that bet, I mean, to what extent does a master plan that looks out ten, fifteen years um, have to consider a kind of fragile place of the university in our town?
That would be a really good bullet point for Judy.
Yeah, it would. And I, you know, I guess our master plan isn't going to come into fruition until two years and we'll probably have more clarity even this time next year. You know, we can't completely predict the future, so. But I think that you're on the right track in that kind of thinking.
And you could look at scenarios. I mean, that's a, that's a great tool in master planning is looking at alternative scenarios where the university declines a significant amount, where the university stays steady. I mean, that's, that's a helpful tool in any master plan effort is think about, uh, you know, and speaking of scenarios, thinking about Tenny Mountain is another scenario that would probably be wise to include if Tenny Mountain stays steady versus uh, is, is much more intensively developed. I mean, all these, in my view, would be sensible things for a master plan effort to consider as scenarios. I mean, it, it doesn't have to be one or the other. I think all of these are, are important.
If I could put my two cents in, a successful Tenny Mountain would be a big help to a successful university. Potentially.
Tease that out a little more.
Insofar as they're seeing themselves in a partnership.
I see.
Um, on many different fronts. And, and just in terms of having a desirable place for students to want to come.
That's true.
Despite the in-state tuition in New Hampshire.
Right.
Sorry to bring us on a dark note.
I think it's good to bring it up.
It's not a dark note, it's reality and it's what you have to do when you've got a college town. You're involved any time. I mean, it's just reality.
Yeah, it's a, we're definitely intertwined.
I thought it was a bullet point, please. What do we?
One of the things I'd want to be able to plan around for the university in particular is if, you know, the worst was to happen and all of a sudden that they recede. One of the things I suspect they would do is use some of the buildings they currently use less, maybe even have vacant buildings. I don't think we have any recourse to do anything about that.
Because it's there, it's up to them.
Because it's up to them, it's state property, they're exempt from literally everything.
And that's a concern.
It would have a huge impact on the feel of this town if you had, you know, take Pema Juwasa Hall. Like all of a sudden that building was just a vacant husk.
Horrible.
It would make that whole section of the community feel very different. Right? So I, I don't know what we can do in terms of planning, but just a thing to think about.
I mean, in an ideal world.
Encourage a situation if, if that kind of.
What would happen with that if that happened?
I would say in an ideal world, the university can maintain optimism and keep the property and create some kind of partnership with a private developer to do something with it in the interim until things hopefully got better. And if they didn't, it could be, it could become a sale. What's that?
What would be their incentive to do that?
Money.
Money.
From the developer?
The, they, they can, the developer can.
They don't pay any taxes on the building anyway.
They would.
If it's having it vacant.
If a private, if a private, oh, yeah. I mean, if, if a private developer went in there, they can pay into the tax space of this town as well as potentially give a kickback to the university system.
They have vacant buildings that.
That's good for us.
That's vacant now that Scott's acquired them out.
If, if they have an asset that they can't maintain and it's going to start crumbling under, under their ownership, it's better to have someone in there who can help maintain it at least. I would think.
Buildings now in this town.
I, I get that, yeah, I know.
That are vacant.
Yeah.
They're vacant and they're not doing real well and they don't seem to be doing much about it.
And the towns approached them to ask if that's something they'd be interested in getting off of their.
We have asked.
Without absolutely distinctive, I've seen some of the meetings where they said, no, we have absolutely no interest in selling it.
I get a little aggressive in one meeting.
Does the church, the church is not being used for much of anything?
It's sort of insulting.
Is it a killing church?
It's a shame.
The one.
It's a shame, yeah.
That's the Draper Maderd.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, I don't know if there's an easy solution to that, but just something to keep in mind as.
Yeah, that's something that Judy really, and I think she'll, but that's really a, a big one. Because there's a lot of property around here that could potentially be vacant. And it could be housing.
And could turn our whole downtown into a ghost town in a way that would not be good.
Unless we got a plan in place.
Unless we got a plan.
Well, what else does Judy need from us to get started? I was hoping to see Judy tonight.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Um, I think unless there's anything else, you know, I think honestly, I think this big picture scenario thinking is probably going to be incredibly helpful to her as she approaches what are going to be the big topics to consider in a master plan. And I think we've touched on a lot of them, infrastructure, economic development, the different parts of town, housing-related things that we have done. Um, housing-related things that have not moved forward. I think we've also talked about changing demographics and what that could mean in, in many different ways. So unless, I, I would say we've probably given Judy a lot to work with unless anybody has anything else that, you know, I, I would think, you know, if there are any other housing or land use goals that, that people want to particularly give any parting thoughts to Judy about as far as, you know, oh, I, I wish we could do this, or I, I don't think we should do that. I, I think we've covered a lot.
I, I, I have a thought. And I would love this process to help, allow us to really look forward and not kind of tread water. I would love it if this board could this year, put to the voters whether we want to go forward with the um pud overlay for Tenny Mountain, which takes care of the Mayhew Turnpike in here, and re- return again to the conversation about the Fairgrounds Road with a little bit more space. And which is the other big thing in here. And the other, the third one is downtown, which we're not, obviously not prepared to deal with at this point. Um, which is also in here. Um, but if we could get those two checked off as either the voters went for them or didn't, and say, let's actually look forward now and not kind of retread the same path again, I think that would be a great thing for this board to do.
Yep, that's an option.
I agree.
I also think that talking with, in talking that we have the downtown, we want to focus on this chapter. Housing, we want to focus on that chapter. Tenny Mountain, we want to focus on the chapter. Maybe we revamp our structure of the master plan. I don't want to be exiled for saying that, but completely, it's just like, maybe we look at a, since our state guidelines might not be the tightest from the state on how they want the master plan. If we can write it in a different way where it is written with the focus of the areas we've been discussing, Tenny Mountain, downtown. Not excluding everything else, but just a starting point of it. May, it might, you know, looking forward, it maybe looks like a different structure moving forward.
As opposed to like chapter one vision.
There are statutorily required chapters or sections in the master plan, which is basically what we have.
Which is what it is.
But, but there's nothing stopping us from doing more than those sections. Or even kind of streamlining some of the stuff. There's been a movement as of late to have shorter master plans that are a bit more punchy and to the point. As opposed to like a long drawn-out implementation section that's like tables, pages and pages and pages of tables.
It's quite thorough though.
Yeah, it is. And it's some good stuff in there to like.
It's not difficult to read though.
It's true, it's not.
That's the thing, anybody can pick it up and read it.
It, it is extensive.
Joseph, what is our, I'm sorry. What is our next step with Judy? I mean, um, so we're, you know, we're on this new grant. There's sort of been some discussions, but I know, looking back at the housing grant, there's a lot of interaction between Barrett Planning, Planning Board, Housing Committee. Um, what's our next steps with her?
I think my understanding is that with this information, the ball is now in Judy's court and she is going to prepare a work plan and report back to the planning board with a work plan of thinking about community engagement efforts, thinking about how we take all of this and start to boil it down into, okay, how do we put pencil to paper and, and come up with some concepts for people to talk about at a, at a community engagement session? I think, but that's, that's my sense that the next step is, is Barrett Planning providing us with a detailed work plan about um timeline for various sort of milestones to be checked off, community engagement, sort of overarching themes and also maybe some checkpoints. Uh, but I think this feedback, as, as I understand the situation, was the last thing Judy really needed to, to get that off the ground.
Okay, perfect.
Maybe we get a vacation?
We're just warming up.
You better plan your vacation now.
But I probably don't, right?
Alright, well, with that being said, thank you, Joseph. Does anyone else have anything they want to contribute for the uh master plan or the housing master plan chapter? Before moving on, Joseph, anything for yourself or?
I've got this fourteen-page statement here.
Please. I, it's also under thirty-three, I think. Alright, well, um, with that being said, if we're all good with that part of the discussion, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Which sort of brings us back to unfinished business or other business. Um, anything else you need to discuss with us?
Uh, no other updates on my end at this point. Um, you know, the, trying to recall if there was anything else that might be of interest to the board. The um, you know, basically everything that has been approved, we're continuing to work on um, with the developers so that after the approval process, we have a, a very good, if, if the board will recall, the um, one of the conditions of approval for the hotel Home to Suites on Riverside Landing Phase Two was for the developer to provide for uh plan review by the town engineer, actually as a condition of approval. So that has actually taken place, or that has started. The developer has approached us and said, we are ready for this plan review to take place. The board's condition said, basically, address any concerns raised in the plan review. If there are any concerns raised in the plan review that the applicant or slash developer does not agree with or does not feel, or, or wants to sort of hash out, that the project would be coming back to the board likely to, to negotiate those because um, the condition really said, plan review and address any comments from plan review and if not, uh, go back to the board to, to negotiate those. But, you know, it's, it's a pretty, um, the site is, is.
Is, is it's a previous site plan done or almost?
It is very close and the town's engineer is continually monitoring that. Um, the construction inspection of the site work, which, you know, has been ongoing for a while and they've been making considerable progress even continually over the winter, which I think was probably a surprise to many of us that they kept it going so strong throughout the winter. But they are ready to move forward with getting everything in line for um, the actual uh hotel development to get its sort of final ducks in a row. As I understand it, the um driveway permit for the second access point on Tenny Mountain Highway has now been approved. That was a sticking point for the Riverside Landing Phase Two development, not the hotel, because the hotel actually won't utilize that access point. But future development on Riverside Landing Phase Two very well might, in fact, will use that second access point. So that's, that's certainly notable. Uh, the Yeton Road commercial development has received a couple of additional permits, Wetlands permit, driveway permit forthcoming. Um, we had a pre-development meeting with uh Mr. Brandon Hiltz out at the, the Beach Hill Road development site. We expect that to likely be underway as well in the near future. So definitely, you know, a lot of, a lot of activity going on related to prior approvals. And next month we'll have a couple of applications that are related to um some items that we've looked at in the past. We will have as kind of a sneak peek, I suppose, the um, uh, BICO development has submitted a request for a con- uh conditional use permit. This is the end of Page Street, uh, where they ga- had a conceptual consultation about um, basically a duplex development, multiple duplexes on the same lot. That will be coming before the board next month as well as the uh site plan for that commercial uh solar array, which received zoning board approval for the array. Uh, that is the Pine Gate Solar Array. Uh, they received their ZBA approval earlier this week.
Was that from the conceptual we had with the gentleman from Vermont representing?
Yep, Carlson Swafford. Yep, you represented them at the zoning board as well. Um, and yeah, so that's basically in place from a ZBA perspective. They got their special exceptions. So they're, they're coming here next.
Did three lakes go in front of the Z- ZBA yet?
They have not at this time. No, not yet. And then those are, those are the, the major ongoing, um, the major ongoing projects at this time. And I, I'm sure we will have more that will continue to uh come up. But those are, those are sort of the big ongoing sort of updates for the board as far as things that have been previously approved.
Good, thank you for those updates.
You said next month, do you mean next meeting?
Next meeting, yes. Yep, the next available.
In two weeks.
Yep, that's right. Not, not next month.
Do we have any public comments tonight?
Students?
May I?
Of Molly's. These are all my students.
So I'm gonna say, I, I thi- I think your teacher would be really excited if you came up and engaged in this civic conversation we're having here and maybe said something about, we're talking about master planning, what you would love to see in this town?
What class are we?
This is their, essentially their freshman seminar tackling a wicked problem.
Oh, hello everyone.
You're getting field experience right now.
Molly's gonna give you extra credit if you come up and.
John is making you promises that I can't.
No one seems too eager. Um, with that, we'll move on with no public comments.
Matt just saved you all.
Can anyone, does anyone have a motion?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Obse, um, opposed?
Hey.
Here we go.
Matt's not here, go ahead.
Thank you very much all.